Alright, we will, we got the final on it, the projector will not work for the screen tonight. So we will continue on now. Mr. Buckland is, Councilman Buckland is on his way from the airport, will be here momentarily. So kind of delayed it to where when we get actually into issues, it'd be good timing for him. We'll blame it all on him anyway. He set it up that, anyway. Well, here he is, here. It's all your fault, John.
No bathroom break. No bathroom break.
Anyway, um, so, uh, like to, uh... No, since he's here, I'll wait. No, let's go ahead and go the call to or, roll to order, and then we can, uh, mess with him some more. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Diball.
Here.
Councilman Buckland. Councilman Cardozo.
Here.
And Councilman Harris.
Here.
Thank you, um, I would like, uh, to have us all rise. I will lead the invocation, and then, um, I've got a good friend over there is going to be, uh, leading us in the, uh, pledge of allegiance. So, thank you, our Lord God, for, uh, the privilege to be able to be here and, uh, do the business of the citizens. Uh, we pray that the wisdom that, uh, you provide beyond, uh, the knowledge that we can gather, and that you would add the wisdoms for us to, uh, make the right decisions, and be the best for, uh, the citizens of Yuba City. We thank you for the, uh, grace you've given to this city, um, this year, and ask you to continue. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Please, Tony, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you, George, appreciate that a lot. One of our retired employees did a fantastic job for us, uh, in the city. So, uh, may the records show that, uh, Mr. Buckla, Councilman Buckland has arrived at, uh, 6:08.
Mayor, I apologize, but, uh, United Airlines was loading 2,000 chickens onto the aircraft, and apparently USDA, uh, is required to count the heads of each one of those chickens before takeoff.
Love it. Okay, anyway, or have the brevity of life, that's fantastic. No, that's a new one, that's like, what do you, how do you?
It happened, folks.
Okay, uh, presentation proclamation, retirement of Mike Pallucci. Mike, would you come up, please? And, uh...
Can't believe, can't believe.
It's on, great. Mike? We're leading too many, uh, great people, but, uh, you've been here a long time. Here's your proclamation, and I will, uh, read, I think it's a brief of that. Mike began his career with Yuba City in 1990 at the Water and Wastewater Laboratory. Was a division of only two employees at that time. Uh, the laboratory flourished under Mike's leadership, vision for progress and ingenuity into a regional institution and commercial success. Mike dedicated his career to measuring and preserving data related to the city's water and wastewater systems, and as a result, has provided valuable resources beyond measure. Actually, pause, when you're dealing with the state and federal government, those items that he's recording is literally life and death for our water and wastewater systems and, and their ruling, so, fantastic job. Although Mike's work in the laboratory focused on qualifying precise details, his commitment to innovative thinking leaves behind a larger-than-life legacy. Mike's contributions to the city's mission of quality service, innovation, and leadership are countless, and his effect on his colleagues is immeasurable, truly commendable, and he will be missed. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Stanley Cleveland Jr., mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Mike's outstanding career, and sincerely urge all residents of the city of Yuba City to join me in recognition of Mr. Michael Pallucci for all of his contributions to the Yuba City community for the past 27 years, done this 19th day of September 2017 at the city of Yuba City in Sutter County. Mike, you have been an exemplary person as a person, and promoted working together, problem-solving, and been such a good teammate. You will be missed very much. Thank you. Want to make any comment? Here it is.
Well, first, I gotta say thanks for the city giving me an opportunity to, to work here. I mean, it's, I've been familiar with the city since the early eighties. My brother and I used to ride motorcycles in a Tenth Street Bridge in high school. So it's amazing what the city has done over the last, well, since the early eighties, it's really grown, into an awesome place to be. My wife and I are gonna stay in the area. Um, but all the people that I've worked with over the years, Steve, Diana, George, and all the bar heads, Diana, it's just, um, it's just been an amazing career, and I would do it all over again in a heartbeat. I love this place. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll be moving on to, um, item number two, which is in public hearings. Proposed Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR, for the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG. Now, we got a little screen there. Right here, she's got it turned around for us.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Arnold Rodriguez Development Services Department. The item before you this evening is the annual CAPR report. The council may recall, on annual basis, there are two, two reports that are presented to the city council, which are in turn are submitted to HUD for our community block development grant. The, um, on annual basis, approximately in April or May, staff brings before you the action plan, which is what the city's, uh, um, preparing on using the upcoming years, uh, CDBG funds. The CAPR, uh, usually comes around this time, um, in the first or second meeting in September, and what that plan articulates is what the previous year's funds were allocated and spent on. So, the CAPR that's being presented this evening is, um, highlights what the funds were spent on for the last fiscal year. Okay, awesome. I think it probably changed.
It changed.
Awesome.
It worked!
So, just as a recap for both the council and for members of the audience, uh, the city of Yuba City is an entitlement city, so on annual basis, we receive roughly $580,000 of community block development grant. Those funds, the city council has discretion in terms of how to spend those funds, however, there's, there are different programs that those funds can be used for, so, so while it's $580,000, we can't collectively say we're gonna spend it only on this item. There are three different areas where those funds can be spent. Again, last year, we received roughly $580,000. In terms of how we spent those funds, we spent roughly $87,000 on public services, and those $87,000 were largely targeted to people experiencing temporary homelessness, it's actually all $87,000, and that was the maximum that the city can actually allocate for that program, which again are public services. So we allocated, um, as much as we could. CDBG or HUD does not, um, articulate or state that we have to spend those dollars in those areas. They simply say you cannot spend above those funds, or can that threshold? So again, we did spend, um, 100% of what we could spend on those programs. Roughly $377,000 went for, for, for either housing, uh, for housing programs or public facility improvements. Um, a decent portion of that went to improvements along Garden Highway. Some of those other dollars were allocated towards different, um, ADA programs. For example, we made some improvements here at City Hall, and then we also did some, um, some sidewalk improvements throughout the community. And then the last portion is the planning and administration, which, which we allocated roughly $116,000. In terms of housing rehab, um, the city has a couple of different programs. We have the Senior Handyman Program, we have the Free Home Repair Program, um, we have Habitat for Humanity. So Habitat, last year assisted 13 different families with home improvements. If you drive out through our community, they'll typically have a sign in front saying the kind that this project was sponsored, um, as part of the city's Community Block Development Grant Program. And the Free Home Repair Program, which is a free program, they assisted 39 different persons, um, or disabled residents, make improvements in their homes, all free of cost, both, uh, both material and labor, um, to help them, um, with, um, with accessing, um, shower bars in their showers or in their restrooms. In terms of public services, um, 36 different individuals were assisted through the Salvation Army. Roughly nine homeless, um, veterans were assisted, um, through the Hands-A-Hold Program, there was 545 persons. Bridges to Housing assisted 10 families, and then Sutter Home Homeless Consortium assisted over 1,100 persons last year. Um, in terms of public improvements, and again, that was the large part of our expenditures last year, um, a decent amount of that went to the Garden Highway Program and different ADA improvements throughout the community. And then also, a portion of the Center Street improvements that were completed several months ago, um, more than half of that program came through the CDBG program as well. So, on annual basis, the city is required to solicit feedback on the CAPR and the various aspects of the CDBG program. We're also required to have a 15-day public comment period. That 15-day public comment period was over yesterday, staff did not receive any comments from either the public or HUD. Um, and so, that public comment period is closed, however, this evening, if the commission, um, um, is more than, um, can obviously accept comments. So, again, so the purpose of today's meeting is to accept any comments, which again, we did not receive any, and to authorize staff to submit the CAPR on behalf of the city to HUD. Um, that concludes staff's presentation.
Any question or comments at this time, before I open it to the public from the council? Seeing none. Uh, the public hearing for the proposed, uh, 1617 CAPR review for the CDBG program is now open. Uh, if there are any members of the public who would like to make any comments, uh, on this, uh, please go to the podium and state your name. Seeing none. Close the public meeting, um, on the CDBG block grant report. Um, bring it back to the council for action.
I, I do have a question of.
Yes.
Of Arnaldo. Um, do we anticipate these funds being reduced again next year, or? What, what's the forecast on use of CDBG?
It's approximately four or five months ago, we were informed that, um, that, that the CDBG program was probably gonna be cut by the federal government. Um, the latest we've heard is that we're actually gonna be receiving $586,000. Um, that's not, uh, we've gone through the process, and we're planning as though we're gonna be receiving those funds any day now. Uh, as of today, we have not received word in, in, in complete absolute confidence that we're gonna be receiving those dollars, however, all indications are, is that we'll be receiving those funds in October.
Thank you.
Seeing any other questions? Seeing none, looking for action.
I'd move staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, no opposition, uh, unanimous, uh, decision. Thank you. Okay, uh, consideration, number, item number three, consideration of general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, rezone, and tentative parcel map to facilitate the development of four single-family homes on 1.21 acres located on the east side of Stabler Lane, between Butte Vista Lane and Park East Drive. It's you again.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the item before you is a total of five different applications to facilitate the development of four single-family homes. Um, as you stated, it's a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, a rezone, an environmental assessment, and a parcel map. And I'll give a synopsis on each one of those. So the general plan amendment and the specific plan amendment are to modify the general plan from the commercial zone district to the single-family residential zone district. The rezoning is to do the same exact thing, and the parcel map would allow the applicant to subdivide the property. It's currently one parcel, and the parcel map would allow them to subdivide it to four single-family residential parcels, and they can either develop those, or they can sell them off for custom homes. The project itself, it's a relatively small parcel, it's 1.21 acres on Stabler Lane, directly across the street on the east side of Regency Park. Um, the site itself has been vacant, um, it's, since that area was largely developed. Um, it's one of the last vacant, relatively minor pieces of property in that portion of the city. In terms of background, it's simply because this piece of property does have a relatively long history in terms of city permits. In 2014, the applicant applied to subdivide the property, uh, into nine single-family homes. Um, um, that application was eventually withdrawn, then the applicant returned in January of 2015. They applied for six single-family homes, that application was withdrawn, and now that brings us to our current application, which is four single-family homes, and, and here we are this evening. And there were different, um, reasons in terms of why those applications were withdrawn. Um, some of those, um, originate from, from neighbors' concerns. Um, I think before you, you have an aerial, um, photograph, which again, shows the single-family homes. To the north, there are a couple of vacant parcels, however, within that part of the city, it was two weeks ago, there were only eight remaining vacant single-family homes that were not accounted for. The rest of them, um, are either under construction, or they've been accounted for by the developers. So again, there's a very small inventory in that part of the community, uh, for, for available parcels. So the map that's being shown right now simply highlights the, the portion of the property that's currently planned for, for commercial, and the new, uh, planned land use, which again is low-density. Um, the map before you simply highlights the Butte, um, Vista master plan, which is a master plan in the community which originally identified this piece of property for commercial. At the time, the thinking was, was that it would be a small neighborhood serving commercial that would house either, uh, either dry cleaners, a yogurt shop, a small convenience store. So again, to serve the local immediate community, rather than a larger regional shopping center, for example, the Feather Rivers Down Shopping Center, which is roughly 1.25 miles to the south. Um, while that plan itself, um, is commendable, unfortunately, market conditions have changed, and, and as a result, the applicant or the property owner is requesting to modify it to something a little more along the lines to what you would find in that area. I'm simply flipping through a couple of slides because I've, I've touched on a couple of those. And let me confirm that, is the map on there of four single-family homes?
Yes, it is.
The one that has the arrows on it.
Thank you. So, to simply to highlight it, the two northern parcels would be facing Stabler Avenue. So as you're driving down Stabler, the two homes would be facing the park. The two homes to the south would be facing Park East Drive. So access for the two homes on the south would be consistent with the homes directly next door and across the street. So the subdivision would largely be complete. The two homes that would be facing Stabler Avenue, while their front doors are gonna be facing Stabler Avenue, providing eyes on the park, um, the, the actual driveway itself is gonna be located on the east side of the property, um, and they're gonna have a shared driveway. Staff is recommending that a block wall be constructed with five feet of landscaping along that block wall to try to, um, to try to mitigate any potential noise, or just to soften the appearance of the block wall. And at the same time, staff is also recommending that a condition be imposed, that a four-foot wrought iron fence along Stabler be installed that matches the fence across the street at the park, so as you're driving through the street, you would have some consistency in terms of design. Am I still showing the arrows?
No.
All right.
Are you happy?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay.
So with that being said, um, I'm probably showing a couple of pictures of the houses themselves. So, um, so four single-family homes, um, very compatible with the existing neighborhood in terms of architectural design, the materials and the various elements, and in terms of the building articulation and fenestration. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and, um, with that, we are making a recommendation that staff approve the mitigated negative declaration proposed for this project, or prepare for this project. And we are also recommending that the council approve the general plan amendment, the specific plan amendment, and the parcel map is outlined in your staff report. And then we are also recommend, or we're also introducing the ordinance to rezon the property, and requesting that the council waive the first reading this evening. That concludes staff's presentation.
Is there anything from the council at this time? Yes?
Arnaldo, you mentioned a cinder block wall, can you, where on the map would that be?
So the cinder block wall would only be, I'm gonna say roughly 95 feet along the eastern, um, property line. If you go down Butte Vista, so the very first single-family home, the existing single-family home that faces north along Butte Vista, so it would be the boundary, so the shared property line between the two proposed parcels and the existing home. And the primary reason, or the only reason what staff is recommending, um, to that wall is because there's gonna be a driveway that's gonna serve, that's gonna serve two homes. That's not, uh, extremely common, and that's our way to try to mitigate it, really any potential noise, or any land use conflicts between people accessing the driveway and the single-family home that's there today.
Okay, so it's for the benefit of that pre-existing single-family home.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. Any other?
I was just gonna make a comment on that type of driveway. I've actually seen driveways that way, and it, it's actually a, a very good way to do that for the, um, for the neighbors around, so, thank you for looking at that in a different way.
Okay, um, going to open the public hearing for the proposed general plan amendment, specific plan, rezone, tentative parcel. It is open, if there are any members of the public who would like to discuss this, uh, item, please go to the podium, state your name.
Hello, uh, my name's George Pantoja, I live, uh, on Park East, right across from the, um, lot. And, uh, he was saying, I don't know if this is the venue to ask, but he was saying the venue, that, uh, in keeping with the neighborhood, are these homes gonna be single-story like the rest of the neighborhood? Is that gonna be like a, uh, something that they're not gonna be able to change, or?
Staff added a condition that articulates that the homes that are to be built there are gonna comply with the elevations that are provided. If for any reason, if someone attempts to alter that, that project would have to come back before the city council.
And, uh, just one more question, uh, you're saying that, um, the, the two lots facing north, are those gonna be, the front door's gonna be facing, uh, Stabler Lane? Okay, but what do you, what about that wall that you talked about? Is there gonna be a wall right there?
So the wall would be on the east property lane?
Right.
It sounds, are you, are you the very first house?
What's that?
Are you the very first house?
No.
No, okay.
The third house, the third house down Park East, yeah.
So there's gonna be a block wall, um, so between the subject site and the very first house along the shared property line, the, the wall itself would not be visible from Stabler, because Stabler's gonna have a four-foot wrought iron fence. That's gonna match the fence across the street at the park.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and so the length of that wall is gonna be probably around 95 feet, if I recall off the top of my head. It's gonna be the length of that first parcel. And so maybe 97 feet, it's pretty close.
Hmm.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, it's like, yeah, before they were trying to do a high-density, and this, this right here is cool. This is, this is.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none. Closing the, uh, public hearing, bringing it back to the council for discussion and action. Anybody wishing to speak anymore?
I, I think with all the adjustments and everything that you've made from the previous applications, this looks like a great project for that location, so with that being said, I go ahead and make a motion to approve as staff recommended.
That's A, B, C, D, E, and F.
A, B, C, D, all of them, A, B, C, D, E.
No, it's B, C, D, E, and F, yeah, okay.
Well, we did the public hearing, so, um, F, and G.
I'll say it.
Got a, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seeing un, unanimous, excuse me. Thank you very much for that. Okay, now we will move on to item number four, consideration of a general plan amendment rezone, tentative parcel map to facilitate the creation of eight lots for future development with industrial uses on approximately nine and a half acres located at 3142 Colusa Frontage Road. Another one, Arnaldo, hey, you're keeping it busy, that's awesome.
Yeah.
I like it.
Thank you, Mayor. So very similar to the item before this, this project includes a general plan amendment, a rezone, and a tentative map, as well as an environmental assessment. However, what's a little bit different about this project in comparison to item three, it, is that this property is currently planned commercial. However, um, they are proposing to modify it to light industrial. At the same time, the property's currently zoned for a commercial, and they would like to amend that to light industrial. And, and the tentative parcel map is to create eight single, or, um, eight lots for either future development, or at a later time, if they happen to have a user, they could come back and consolidate some of those parcels. From speaking with the applicant, they do not have any end users in mind right now. Um, however, this simply provides them with options. So the property itself, it's located just west of George Washington, roughly 750 feet to the west, located on the south side of Colusa Highway, just on the south side of the, uh, of the Frontage Road there. Again, it is 9.5 acres in area, and, and the property's currently vacant. Immediately to the west, there's a mini storage, whereas the property to the east is largely developed with somewhat of an eclectic use, or, um, so uses, you have some offices, you have some, uh, some light industry, you have some uses that are probably slightly heavier in industry, um, in the area. Council, is there a map on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So the, so the regional commercial district in this area was originally planned for back in 2004, and it was part of a larger 43-acre regional shopping center district. If you simply take a look at the terms of the size and the location, it is an ideal location for regional commercial, because it has, has excellent access. However, with that being said, because how it's been developed and how the parcel, um, how the existing parcels are somewhat fragmented, um, that's one of the reasons why staff felt comfortable, um, recommending approval, because this specific piece of property, it's at the mid-block. Whenever you have regional commercial, you typically wanna be at the intersection of two major roads, which again, this piece of property is not, it's mid-block. Generally, with mid-block regional commercial, you typically cannot get anchor tenants, and then on top of that, if you simply look at the parcel configuration, uh, width versus depth, it's not conducive for your big-box shopping centers, which is what the C3 Regional Shopping Center District envisions. A good example of a regional shopping center is our mall, or the Walmart Shopping Center, or the Lowe Shopping Center. Those are traditional big-box shopping centers, however, they're always located at the intersection of two major roads, which again, this lacks. So ultimately, Western Parkway's gonna be developed to the east. And so if staff were to, or if the council were to support the modification this evening, therefore eliminating roughly nine and a half acres of regional commercial, that would roughly leave about 25 acres of regional commercial. For comparison purposes, if you take a look at the Feather River Down Shopping Center, that's roughly 17 acres, whereas the Winko Shopping Center's slightly closer to 18. So it would still result in a slightly larger shopping center, um, or, or about a third larger than those two shopping centers. And I have a couple of different slides that, that show the various, um, commercial that would be remaining. The other reason why staff feels comfortable supporting this project is, is simply there's an overall lack of industrial space in the city. There are some existing industrial space along Garden Highway, however, that area lacks some of the infrastructure that's currently required. The applicant has indicated, while this area immediately in front of the property lacks infrastructure, they understand the conditions that are gonna be required in terms of extending both sewer and water to the site, and they have a comfort level moving forward. Um, the applicant, um, and staff have met on numerous occasions to, to discuss those conditions, and they feel comfortable with every condition that staff proposed. I'm trying to get to the map, to subdivision map that shows blue highlights, is that, that one? Thank you. Um, so if you take a look at it, um, the proposed subdivision, it's a relatively long street with the cul-de-sac at the very end. However, we are providing a stub street for future development to the south. So, that may be in 10 years, and may be in 25 years, however, if the property to the south ever develops, one of the things that we wanna ensure... one of the things that we wanna ensure is that we could potentially have a road in that area. And then you obviously show that the parcels themselves, they're roughly an acre, slightly larger than acre, about one point two one acres in area. So with that being said, staff did prepare an environmental assessment. We, we feel comfortable that we've incorporated appropriate mitigation measures to lessen any potential impacts to less than significant. And with that being said, staff is proposing that the council this evening approve the environmental assessment prepared, approve the general plan amendment, and the parcel map, and then we're also introducing the ordinance to rezone the the property, and we're requesting to waive the first hearing. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Arnaldo, are there any specific building requirements for this property? As in type, design? Or can they erect a steel frame building with a storefront on a concrete slab?
They the city's design guidelines are silent in regards to industrial. However, whenever applicants come in, and one of the things that staff tries to do is negotiate design guidelines. However, by the strict application of the city's design guidelines, industrial does not have applicable design guidelines for this area. So you're absolutely correct. They, they could in theory come in and can make an argument, and a very sound argument at that, that, that the city's design guidelines do not comply. With that being said, there is some language in the city's general plan that, that provides the city some discretion in terms of adding articulation, landscaping requirements, financing requirements. Industrial development is always a challenge. Oftentimes, where it's located, it's not necessarily an issue. However, we're also sensitive because of its location and its high visibility on Colusa Highway, that that is an issue that we're gonna have to take a hard look at once applications are submitted.
And that, that was the next part to this, is the backside of these businesses, where these lots would face directly out onto Highway twenty, which is at a gateway to Yuba City, has residential developments across, or catty corner to that, so they'd be looking out, some residences would be looking out at, at these properties. So there's no, again, no requirement for, for architectural design. What would it take? On a project like this, what would council have to do to build and move forward and change that to where we'd have a higher level of development design on this?
My recommendation this evening would be to impose that the two northernmost parcels right along Colusa Highway comply with the city's commercial design guidelines, and the commercial design guidelines would ensure that the project would be built to quality standards. And quite frankly, they're the two buildings that are gonna be the most visible. The buildings to the south of that are gonna be often, more than likely, they're gonna be screened by the two northernmost buildings.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's see, thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing. On this, proposed general plan amendment rezone. Comments? I see somebody already there. Hi, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is George Musallam. I'm with North Valley Engineering, the engineer on this project. We have reviewed the, the conditions of approval as submitted by staff to you, and we are in agreement with them. I'd like just to maybe take a moment and, and talk about the concerns with the, with the appearance of the items. I think, I think we are, our intention is to build a quality development, Mr. Buckland, so I don't think the owner is here and he can't talk about this as well. I would be a little concerned with restricting the conditions to commercial, commercial standards. As you know, as it stands right now, this development is gonna be a little expensive to develop with bringing the sewer and water. So every, every condition that is imposed that will add to the cost of the development might be, might be something we really need to think about, so. So, but we're here to answer any questions. Like I said, Mr. Singh is here, and between me and him, I think we can answer your questions.
Through the mayor, if you don't mind.
You can respond.
So, so George, what, what would the proposal be to build to ensure that, that this development, especially the, the north boundary, would be aesthetically pleasing to what are an entryway to Yuba City? I'm, I'm concerned that we would just have a blank-faced wall backed up against our highway, and, and that's probably the least attractive thing that, that I would want out there.
I think, I can appreciate that, Mr. Buckland. I think one of the conditions requires to landscape the frontage, and that's something we can work hard on doing, something that really looks good. And also maybe, and I haven't talked to Mike about this, but maybe one of the options is maybe increase the setback on the north side and make sure that the buildings are set, set to the, to the back away from that line, and maybe require some more landscaping. So, but like I said, we, we haven't discussed this before. This is the first time I hear the concern come up. But I think something maybe I would recommend to Mike, that maybe that's something we can do. You know, maybe try to mitigate it with some landscaping.
Again, well, I mean, this is just a question, so with landscaping, there's, there are maintenance requirements to that, to keep it good-looking, viable, alive. It's a constant investment. I would point to the, the least attractive landscape that we have in Yuba City. And I'm, and I would be very cautioned not to, to say this, but I will anyway. It's the, the parking lot near our Walmart. And, and it's frontage with the highway. I drive by that, and I see the most unappealing landscape project that there possibly could be. It does screen things, and maybe even overscreen signs. Some of the monument signs that are out there. So, you know, again, I have a concern, because we have two businesses that have gone way above in locating car dealerships on that corridor. And they have, have exceeded my expectations, my personal expectations on what that appearance is from, from Highway twenty.
I think there is a condition on the map, and correct me if I'm wrong, Arnaldo, that there should be, they require the development to be annexed to the landscaping and lighting district for the maintenance of the landscaping. I don't think you have that on Walmart. Walmart was, was a different, different situation. But here, there is a mechanism for the, for the city to enforce and ensure that those landscaping facilities are installed and maintained properly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any otherbody else to comment at this time? Seeing none, close the public session, and bring it back to the city council. Any more questions or comments? I understand the concerns too, 'cause we finally just had some of the ugliest stuff on ninety-nine tore down. And so we're a little sensitive to some of the aesthetics, 'cause we're trying to improve, permanently improve the looks along our highways and entryways, so we're a little sensitive to that problem right now and for the future. And we don't want that to occur again. Question I would have, is there anything that we could, could do? I mean, actually, there was a question as to, from council member Buckland on that. Arnaldo?
Mayor, short of requiring that the two northernmost buildings comply with the commercial guidelines, the city council can impose a condition to either have the project go before consideration, before the planning commission for architectural review. And that, I believe, provides enough alternative or enough flexibility built into it, where the conditions can be negotiated in terms of materials, building heights. Because at the same time, I think it could be challenging to impose requirements on the applicant without knowing exactly how it's gonna work out. The project develops tomorrow versus ten years from now. However, I think there's probably some middle ground there to simply say that, that the project, and that can be worked directly into the rezone application, that, that any applications for the two northernmost buildings be presented for consideration before the planning commission for architectural design review.
That's actually a good idea. Thank you. That's why we have you in that position.
Thank you.
Is there any difficulty with the applicant according to this? We'd like to we don't wanna do something in session that would...
Mr. Mayor, I, I believe if the condition, if the intended condition for the, for the applicant to comply with the design guidelines applicable to M-one districts, I think, I think that'll be fine.
Okay, looks like he's giving you the signal. Thank you. So I guess with that change in whatever that is, can you state what that would be in part of the conditions? Because we do have conditions of approval for that copy here for inter-office memo, so what else would have to be added to that?
We would add
Correct wording.
We would add an X overlay zone district on the rezone application. So, so the condition would run with the property, so it's very clear to any potential buyers of the property.
Just those two northern ones?
On the two northernmost parcels right along Colusa Highway.
Just on those two.
That's gonna read that any future construction or development of that building shall go before this planning commission for consideration in regards to architectural review design.
Sounds like it's...
Well, it wouldn't necessar- So George is asking if we can add a language to state that, that the project will comply with the M-one design guidelines. The, the M-one design guidelines are silent in terms of building elevations. They only articulate property development standards, not necessarily what the building looks like. I think if that's the case, I think the planning commission is astute enough to, to have a very good understanding of market conditions. And at that same time, I, I believe that it's there's enough flexibility built into that condition that provides flexibility for both the project applicant and the city in terms of quality design. Without dictating it here tonight exactly how it has to look and function.
And through, through the mayor.
Please, councilman.
Would there-
I wanna make a mistake.
Would there be any harm in delaying this and bringing this back in front of council? With the, with the language, and certainly, so the the developer would know exactly what the conditions would be that, that council would be looking at.
Not from staff's position.
Okay, he just said the conditions that you proposed are the ones to go with. Not the M-one. So, to clarify with all that conversation, again, repeat what the modification is.
To the modification, so I'll also add that the rezone application is gonna come back before the city council for consideration. So this evening, we're introducing the ordinance. At the next meeting, we'll be bringing back the ordinance, which is gonna have the clear language. That's gonna state that the two northernmost parcels of the nine point five acres are gonna go before the planning commission for architectural design review.
Thank you. With that, I am looking for motion regarding this item.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make staff's recommendation B, Q, F, plus what Arnaldo said. How's that sound?
It'll come back with force.
Yes.
I got a motion.
I'll second that.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, unanimous vote. Thank you for working with us on that to make sure you get the best, best approval product. Okay, moving on. Now we're going on to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on, of controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We had one request for a letter to be read from Levy District One. And so that'll go into the record, so I will read that. Anything else on the top that I think it should be okay? This letter is from Levy District One of Sutter County. Its location is two four three Second Street, Yuba City. And here says here, "Members of the city council, the board of directors of Levy District One of Sutter County has reviewed the Sutter County draft two-year plan to address homelessness in Sutter County. Levy District One of Sutter County appreciates the county's efforts on this important issue. The district is aware that the city of Yuba City has also recently dealt with the homeless issue, and the results of the city's efforts have been very encouraging. The district would like to commend the city on their success and encourage them to continue to be diligent in their approach. The district will continue to be an active partner with the city and county to do what it can to better the lives of the residents of our community. The district thanks you for your efforts, offers, and, and offers its continued support, and looks forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, the signatures of the members, directors Francis Silva, Charles Hoppin, and Al Motna." So that goes into the record. And yes, we're all trying very hard to find a workable plan with the homeless that is down along the river, and it is a complicated one and difficult. Okay, there are no other written requests. The parents of interested citizens, members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing the general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. We have nobody. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Are there any wishing to remove any of the items?
Through the mayor, I'd like to have item number eight removed and for a separate discussion.
We have one request. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to approve seven, skipping eight, removing eight, and nine through twelve.
Summed up.
Got a motion? You have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None there? Okay. Diana?
Sure. Good evening. So the item before you tonight is related to Underground Utility District number twelve dash one, which is located on Second Street, particularly Phase One of the project. And so the city council established that underground utility district. The city worked with PG&E for the relocation of the overhead utilities to be placed underground. As part of the project, as the contractor was excavating, they found some culturally sensitive materials, as the location of Second Street is located near the levee. So working through the process with the tribal the tribes, there were two different tribes that were identified as potential descendants. We had to go through the process of hiring tribal monitors to monitor the excavation. We sifted through a portion of the spoils that were found, and then separated out the culturally sensitive materials from the soil. Again, as we started excavation, we found additional material that we stockpiled. And through this process, we've hired archaeologists, tribal monitors, and we've had security personnel on site. With this project, we hired dock and engineering to facilitate this, and dock and subcontracted to Far Western, who is the consultant used by Sabifka to deal with the culturally sensitive materials, as they already had an established relationship with- as they already had an established relationship with both tribes. And there was a trust level between Far Western and the tribes in terms of dealing with the materials. So the item before you tonight is to award an agreement for professional services to Dock and Engineering for their archaeological services related to the district in the amount of $204,284.
More comments, questions from you?
The question, and this has come up in the public in the last couple of weeks. We arrived at an agreement with Docken. Is this done through a bidding process? Is this done just as a professional services agreement? And it is for, or to the tune of $204,000, so.
Originally, we hired Docken through a formal RFP process associated with the Fifth Street Bridge project because of the proximity to the bridge. And the portion of this undergrounding is specifically related to the bridge project. That's why we contracted with Docken for this particular scope of work. So we had gone through a formal RFP process to select Docken originally.
Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Okay. Thank you.
I have the same thing. I know. It's out on the public. It's awesome. It's the way we need to do it. Any other questions? Seeing none, looking for action on this item?
Staff's recommendation for number eight.
Second? Okay, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, unanimous vote. Thank you. That was an excellent question, though. Okay, moving on to general items. Refunding the city's 2011 wastewater revenue refunding bonds.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. We have the opportunity to refund the 2011 wastewater revenue refunding bonds. After discussing this matter with the city's financing team, it was determined that we could obtain the best financing terms through a private placement offering to banks. A credit review package and bid forms were sent out to 23 different commercial banks. Bids were received back from 10 banks. JP Morgan Chase provided a preliminary fixed interest rate bid of 2.03% through the final maturity of June 1st, 2013. We received an updated term sheet from JP Morgan Chase today with a rate of 2.11%. When they presented us with the preliminary quote bid to us, it was not a rate that was lockable until it was confirmed and approved by city council. Since then, the bond market has changed a little bit, and 15 basis point increase in US treasuries, for example. So we're looking at a rate today of 2.11. The city is currently paying interest at an average rate of 4.03. This refunding will generate approximately 1.62 million in gross savings and 1.37 million in net present value savings over the remaining life of the bond issue. This equates to an amount of savings of $108,000 per fiscal year that we will not pay in interest expense, and it will not extend the final payoff date of the existing debt. It should be noted that JP Morgan Chase provided the lowest bid in the city's 2014 refunding transaction of the 2007 wastewater bonds. Clearly, they are comfortable with their relationship with the city of Yuba City and see us as a good credit risk. Therefore, providing us with the lowest cost bid in this refunding as well. The updated term sheet results in about $69,000 less in total savings over the remaining 15 years of the term of the bonds than what was originally calculated. The annual savings, as I indicated, is about 108,000 now. It was about 112,000 based upon their preliminary bid. Council should be advised that by issuing these refunding bonds based upon the terms offered by JP Morgan Chase, we cannot prepay them or refund them in the future. They're non-callable for the next 15 years. We would make our stated payments in accordance with the amortization schedule based upon their bid. But at 2.11%, I'm very confident with that, as is the city's financial advisors. I'd like to introduce Mark Northcross. He's been at our council meetings before. He's with NHA Advisors, the city's longstanding relationship with them. They're watching our debt for us and advising us and making recommendations to us on a regular basis. We're very fortunate to have them helping us with our debt capacity and what we can do to save the city taxpayers and ratepayers money. At this time, council will consider taking action to approve a resolution of the city council authorizing the issuance and sale of 2017 wastewater refunding bonds in the maximum amount of 9.15 million to refinance the outstanding 2011 bonds and approve related agreements and actions. Doing so will then lock us in to the 2.11 rate offered by JP Morgan Chase. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions from the council for Robin? Seeing none, I do want to make a comment. Finally made it into my fan club. Yeah, I have a little thing called Fam, and it's Found Another Million. So I just joke with her, you defined another million. She finally made it into that. But I will say that the refunding is, for me, it's easier to understand in general public as hyphenated word because it's refunding something, you know, changing it, not giving a refund. Because the first time I ever heard that in government, it was like, what? Yeah, refund? How are we going to, what is that? So it's just refunding it, taking and changing the rates or whatever in the contract and making it refunded and stuff. So I just wanted to mention that for the general public because a lot of us out there really have no understanding of how that goes on in the financials. And thank you again for getting it down to, refinancing is another word of saying it. So, thank you for doing this. Each time you find something new like that, at least 1% difference in that large money, that saves us a lot. Now, the other item is, does this affect the analysis of the wastewater for the fee increases that won't be so high? So we're doing something that actually is going to make it to where that debt service we have is actually lower?
Yes, it will help our future rate increases. We'll provide this information when we go to update our rate model next year, and it will provide some relief on having to increase the rates as much.
Not much, but I mean, everything we can find-
Yes.
-to make this happen. So we are trying to limit the increases that are necessary on water and wastewater. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
That, looking for action?
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
The motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I miss another. Not on that one for 15 years, though.
No, that's for 15 years, and you won't be here.
Are you sure?
Go talk to her. Okay, moving on to item 14. Appointments to city of Yuba City Board's commissions. I'm going to have to find that one in here. This one has to do the mosquito vector. I think that's the one that it is. We had our previous council member, John Buckland, had been, I mean, John Dukes. Sorry, Mr. Buckland. John Dukes was the member for the area. And he has since moved out of state. And I have asked to fulfill the one year remaining of the term. And then when it comes up again, it will be open for anybody and everybody to try to go after and be appointed in the public. But this time, I would really like to serve on that. I've been interested in this for a long time and would like to continue the, and be part of it. So if there's any concerns or anything, or... Okay, looking for action?
Well, there's two individuals here because Mr. Harris is also in part of the recommendation. But on a question for, and through the mayor, a question on mosquito vector control. You know, a few years ago, we transitioned over to having a council representative as part of the mosquito and vector control. And it has allowed, I believe, Mr. Dukes's involvement there was at a far deeper level than what we've been receiving back to this council-
I concur.
...from previous individuals. And in fact, if you listen to any of the local radio stations today, that's Mr. John Duke's voice on there talking about the Zika virus and all the mosquito-borne illnesses that are related to it. So it really kind of stepped up a notch over there. And I certainly believe that you will fill that to the highest level. So I would certainly make that recommendation. And then, do you want me to go ahead and continue on with the Yuba Sutter Arts piece?
Art council, go for it.
And then there's that additional opening for the Yuba Sutter Arts. And I would follow the recommendation to appoint council member Sean Harris to represent the, to represent us at the Yuba Sutter Arts Board of Trustees.
And he says he's enjoying it, so I can't, I can't argue with that. He's enjoying it.
Thank you.
So, looking for action then?
I just wanted to say, Sean, thanks for taking that over.
You're welcome.
You were much more fair for that one.
My motion, yeah, I mean, my motion was basically-
Okay, you're going for the motion. Okay, then I'm looking for a second.
I got the second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Now we will move on to our last item, which is the council member reports. Council member Buckland.
Attended our Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency meeting. Went through the finances. We have some updated from beginning of the levee project to now. Finance information, we just got that a couple of days ago. I'm sure the mayor also received that information. But going through the finances, everything is on track with the emergency repairs. It's being funded by the Department of Water Resources for three miles of levee adjacent to Yuba City and the concerned 85,000 residents. That should start to wrap up. In fact, this week, they're reconstructing the levee between the 10th and Fifth Street Bridges. So they're bringing it back up to height. And that'll be the first section completed. They are still progressing on a heading south towards the 10th Street Bridge from the north. That should be wrapping up by the end of the month. And then two headings are coming together down below Fifth Street and north of the Sheriff's Training Center, down adjacent to Second Street. So all of those are coming together. Everything should be wrapped up, weather compliant, and maybe even finished sometime right around the 1st of December. The board also took action to correct a possible Brown Act issue on notice on an agenda regarding the citizen, or the KDAC board, the Citizen Advisory Board. And that was reaffirmed by the same vote that had occurred at a previous meeting with two dissenting votes for the elimination of that committee. Attended the League of California Cities was last week, Wednesday through Friday. It all runs together, especially after you watch somebody count 2,000 chickens. Lot of, well, I think all of us were down there. Preet wasn't down there. They were asking about you, though, and your programs.
I got lots of emails.
Yeah, yeah.
How's your program doing?
So we're down there, took a number of, or attended a number of classes looking at issues related to our public employees' retirement system and other issues that are facing, that we're facing through homelessness and some of the other very pressing issues to see how other jurisdictions are dealing with it. I would tell you that the most pressing conversation during the three days, regardless who you talk to, was on homelessness. So that seemed to be any time you would sit down and talk to another member from an agency down south in the valley, didn't matter where, that was the pressing issue of the day. Attended, in the middle of that, attended our SECOG Board of Directors meeting and was privileged to have a little bit more in-depth discussion regarding where our sales tax goes to, or how we get it and how it's distributed through the system. I'm not going to go back and recreate that entire discussion that we had over an hour's period of time. But it's highly confusing exactly where the monies come from, especially when we do online purchases. And there seems to be a push for other types of taxation on services and things like that that we would all need to be aware of in the future. But certainly also looking for some legislative cure to what a point of sale is or what a transaction does and where that can be taxed at, which we believe should be able to be done. If you're on your couch, that, those taxes that are collected or should be collected should then be transferred to that jurisdiction, regardless of the state it's purchased from. And then I just got back, I'm not going to even try to delve into everything that we did with SECOG on a study mission in Denver, just arriving back here this evening at Sacramento Airport. I'm not going to tell you what time we arrived because then that would lead the highway patrol to possibly want to issue a ticket just based on that alone. But I was going with the flow of traffic.
They all say that.
But I will bring back for the public to see some of the projects and transit projects that are tying together the greater Denver area. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Council member Cardoza.
All right, before I start, I would like to introduce two distinguished gentlemen, retired city employees. They came in tonight to visit. First of all, retired Parks and Recreation Director Bill Besso is in the audience. Hello, Bill. And also, don't blame this man. He's the gentleman that hired me a little under 40 years ago. Retired Finance Director Jack Kurtz is with us tonight. And with Jack's great knowledge back then with his finances, the building that we're in tonight was paid for before we walked into it. So, thank you, Jack, and thank you, Bill, for being here. I want to start off with that. Thank you.
Before we walked into it tonight, or?
No, well, when we moved in it back in 90, 91. When we came, oh, yeah, that's nice. Yeah, paid for it tonight.
When was it?
81. Thank you. I got to get it right. 81. We'll get it right. 81. Yeah. Anyway, meetings. Attended the Northern Stock Valley Integrated Regional Management Meeting. We passed a condition to go forward to get us the $8 million we need to replace the water meters in the community. It's going onward, so it's at the first step to head onward. Attended the Regional Housing Authority of Southern Nevada Counties Meeting, of course, the League of Cities. And I attended a community meeting for the proposed state-of-the-art treatment facility over here on Stable Lane. It's called Luminance, state-of-the-art. Chamber stuff was quick and easy. Attended the monthly ambassadors meeting. Was at the Marysville Stampede Kickoff Party at Giewiki Ford. And then also the next night, the cattle drive. And I learned a lesson. You don't wear a red shirt to a cattle drive. That was a mistake. When they let the steers out, they headed for me when they let them go. That was fun. Community and city-
Fun and-
Yeah. Community and city events. I attended the Yuba City Food Truck Mania. It was hosted by our youth commission. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah. Councilman Harris and I attended the reception at the Community Memorial Museum. It was history on hunting in Yuba Sutter, great art pieces. I got to be a surprise guest speaker at the SIRs meeting. The gentleman was supposed to be there, did a no-show, and he said, can you talk for 15 minutes? And I said, I guess I could. It was fun. I let him know what our city's doing, community stuff. And they were pretty gentle on me. They didn't hit me too hard with the questions. I celebrated this weekend the Celebration of Heroes at the Crossroads Church. And I attended the Sixth Annual Pig Feed hosted by our Police Officers Association. The mayor of Live Oak invited me up to, Jason Banks invited me up to Live Oak. I attended the Fall Festival for the day, or half the day. the Fall Festival for the day, or half the day, um, state, the State of Education Address was given by Ball Dilly, excuse me, by Baal, not Ball, Baal, uh, Southern County Superintendent of Schools, and then this morning, this afternoon, I had the honor of, uh, being at a swearing in ceremony for two new records clerks at our Yuba City Police Department, and that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you very much. Council member Harris.
All right. I forgot about the museum thing, that was, that was pretty interesting, we went to that. Uh, since, uh, our last meeting, I, every, basically, everything on here as far as committees and commissions go, boards and commissions, uh, ended up being canceled or had to miss because of the, uh, League Conference, but, uh, community stuff, I did, um, did you mention the food truck event, that Nixon's here, congratulations on that, it was very, very well-attended, very, um, professional, you guys put a lot of effort into that, it's really good, hopefully we can have many more, it's, it was really good, yeah. Um, let's see here, League of California Cities, we mentioned, uh, I did come back on, uh, Thursday and attended a fundraiser for the Animal Services Authority over here at Ting's Refuge, pretty good, pretty well-attended, there, I was surprised to see the number of people there, so that was nice. Um, God, I was on vacation for about five days and now we're here today, so that's pretty quick, pretty much it, I got back yesterday, so, as far as boards and commissions related to the council, that's the extent for my two weeks, pretty uneventful, so, thank you.
Okay, Vice, uh, Mayor Dibball.
And from the last time we came in, uh, for council... For the last time that we came in for council meetings, most of the boards and commissions were also, um, canceled and/or, uh, I actually made a trip out to go see my daughter play, um, in Oregon, so I took some vacation time as well, and I did get the opportunity to attend the ninetieth anniversary of our Yuba College, our community college, which was a great breakfast morning, and then also taking a tour of the campus and so forth, so, um, that was a, a great event only because a lot of us have attended Yuba College and that's where we started our, uh, our college journey, so it was nice to see that, um, and step ground back where we started. Aside from that, we're back here tonight, so.
Thank you. Oh, this time of year is, uh, really busy for the mayor, everybody, uh, just wakes up after a summertime of being gone and, uh, you get phone calls, uh, night and day with, uh, mostly community, people wanting to discuss, you know, issues that they have or questions, and it's actually pretty enjoyable, uh, and I enjoy talking with them. Um, we did go to the, um, League of California Cities Conference, uh, being the voting member, I ended up staying all the way to the last second, till the gavel hit, yeah, he's laughing because he knows what it's about. Um, I did attend a lot of items, I wanted to report, but I was being interviewed by, just before coming into our closed session, uh, by five students from Yuba City High School, normally that's a, you know, twenty-minute interview, went on forty-five, fifty minutes and I finally said, I've got a closed session I need to go to, and just in the rush and everything, I forgot my, uh, my notes about the conference, and I will bring that to the next meeting and give a little report on that. We did have the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency meeting, it was reported by, uh, Councilman Buckland, but, um, myself and another member from Live Oak were, oh, actually, Manny was there as a silent member, uh, actually in the, uh, SECOG offices, open to the public, it was announced, anybody could have come in, we did all that notification correctly, so, we had about an hour there that we went and did that, at that location. Uh, food truck, fantastic job, it was great, still too hot, man, on that street, that's number one concern that I heard, it was just way too hot, uh, so some people kept saying, uh, other than that, they were just thrilled about having that in the area, uh, and the other, uh, top comment is, uh, uh, getting a version of it, a smaller version of it with local, um, uh, food trucks, um, roach coaches as they used to be called, uh, have them all show up and, uh, try to do something local, um, a local type one, so that's, um, I think a great idea. Uh, and also attended the, and spoke at the Heroes, uh, Celebration, uh, John Goodwin from Duck Dynasty was there, uh, and some of the, uh, people that sang there were just phenomenal, I, I have a CD from one, which is kind of a jazz, blues type group, and I enjoy that, um, had a good time with that. The Civil Air Patrol, the local, and the, um, Sea Cadets attended and honored, uh, everybody that was, uh, speaking and, uh, needed to be honored or deserved honoring, uh, police, fire, air force, whoever was there, uh, it was a large group, it was, uh, an honor to our community what, what those youth are doing. Uh, attended the pig feed for the police and that was enjoyable, sometimes a pig doesn't taste as good as others, but this one here was, was a very tasty roasted pig this time, uh, was hard to stop because it was so good. Other than that, um, I have nothing else, with that, meaning adjourn.